Call to order the regular meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission on September 4th, 2024. Mr. Medina, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Buckley?
Here.
Commissioner Furman?
Here.
Commissioner Gribleionis? Commissioner Kolkmeier?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Here.
Commissioner Peters? You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We will go to item three, other legislative matters. This is potentially the end of a long, long road. Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner O'Farrell is also here.
Oh, I apologize for that.
We definitely have a quorum. As everyone will recall, this started in January with the city council request for us to make recommendations related to ways to increase community engagement in the pre-planning process before a formal application has been filed, and also to look at issues related to park adjacent property. We have had, I think, maybe six hearings in total and opportunities for comment, and we've received that in person and on Lakewood Speaks. We have had a draft resolution available on Lakewood Speaks and invited comments, and we have a slightly revised draft resolution in front of us tonight. The only changes in what's posted on Lakewood Speaks and what is before us tonight from the previous hearing is that I have put in the additional hearing dates, August 28th and today, September 4th, and then in subsection B changed, and of course, we did this by approval by the commission, to have the recommendation under B reference the Community Planning and Development Department and also call on the city council to enact a requirement having to do with that rather than it be direct the city manager. And that, I think, is just part of the city manager form of government. We want to make sure that we are talking about what city council can do and what the city manager can do because people have different roles. Other than that, we did have a number of issues that came up that I think we're going to want to discuss further today. And my suggestion would be that we do the same thing we did last time with this draft resolution by taking each of the subparts individually, and that's A, B, C, and D. But let me make one other point as I was thinking about our last discussion, which is that we have received six or seven requests from the city council for recommendations, quite a few over the last year. Some of those have been ones that are tailor-made for actually giving specific direction on ordinance changes. In fact, the ADU is the best example of that, where we literally marked up that section of the zoning ordinance and sent it to them. And I think to the extent we can be specific, that is very beneficial to them. But most of the recommendations have not been in that way. They've been more general, as is, I think, appropriate because we have a circumstance where the concept goes to city council. If city council likes it, then they direct the staff to say, we would like to see an ordinance along these lines. And that's one of the things that I think is, this is an interesting set of recommendations because it has some things that are very specific and it has some things that are more general. And I think that that's part of what I was struggling with last time, and I think others were, were how specific do we need to be? And I think it is a good reminder of where we are in the process. We are not drafting a final ordinance that we are going to hand them. I think that this, under subsection A, is really a fantastic first attempt at spelling that out. But even this is not in ordinance form. And I think that several folks, and I know that Commissioner Gribleionis and Commissioner Buckley that worked very hard on that, said before the commission, we'd love to hear what others think about this, and we would love to have staff comments and whatnot. And I think that that's something to keep in mind, that even that section, which is pretty specific, I would still hope, and I think everyone would still hope, that when we present this to the city council, if they support the concept, then they would direct staff to go through this with a fine-tooth comb. And they may suggest different points, they may suggest different things, but we've made a clear statement, if this were to be approved, about the concept. So that's kind of the way I'm approaching all of these now is I'm not thinking in terms of drafting a final ordinance, but in terms of conveying the concepts that we are recommending. I hope that makes sense to others, but that's kind of the way I'm thinking about it. Having said that, let us go to the resolution and maybe start with our discussion again on subsection A. This provision, which I strongly support, and the reason I support it is that I think that it is an innovative tool. It takes advantage of an approach that is already in our code that relates to, that is, the enhanced development menu that says we want to allow flexibility, but we want to insist that developers do certain things, but we're going to allow flexibility in how that gets accomplished. I think that concept is embraced here effectively. I like that there are two different options. There may be, at some point, if this goes forward, suggestions by staff to add additional options. But I think the concept is what I find to be a very interesting and I think directly relates to what we were asked to do. Tell us, give us a tool, a recommendation about how to get folks involved. So with that, I would invite questions, changes, discussions, or anything else that we would like to address as it relates to subsection A. Commissioner O'Farrell?
And this does not relate to subsection A. It, backing up, is, again, is more of a threshold question. I'm late to the game, I realize. So I just read Commissioner Stewart's directive to us, the request, which was for us to specifically look at ways that the public can be engaged in the pre-planning process. Are we at all worried? So just from what I've learned so far, my overall impression is that because nine out of 10 applications don't make it to the planning process, that that's not a good use of the public's time or our staff time. But again, I'm late, and I certainly don't want to be unresponsive to the city council.
And others may have thoughts of that as well, and I share that concern. Very early on in this discussion, the question was, to what extent does it make sense to engage folks in so early a stage when so much changes and so much, so many projects die or withdrawn or, you know, go into mothballs for years? My personal view on that is that the single biggest compelling message we have heard is people sense that there isn't transparency. And even though I question the accuracy of that, I think there's a lot of transparency, but I want to do something that supports, that takes away that concern. And I think that at the very moment that a project first comes to the door, obviously the city doesn't know about it until someone comes through the door, but once it comes through the door, there ought to be a way for that, you know, pay attention to this piece of property, there might be development on it, to be out there publicly. And I don't know that it's a super effective tool. I think actually the most effective tool will not be for individuals. It'll be for like homeowners associations or other groups that will opt in, and they'll say, look, just send me the list of every project from the pre-planning process forward. If there's any I care about, I'll make a call and try to find out more about it. They cannot do that now unless there is some notification that there may be a development on that particular parcel. So it seems, it is, I think, an example of being inefficient in the service of the maximum transparency. Commissioner?
Is there any possibility of having what we kind of resolve today, even though it's not an ordinance, our recommended language, applied to the application phase instead of, so the moment the application, you know, is submitted, that these recommendations go into effect? I know that's not pre-planning, but just the fact that it is called pre-planning sort of suggests to me it's premature.
And actually, Mr. Rice, I may ask you to address that. I think we do already make available, do we not, once an application has been filed? Is that something that's searchable on the department's website? And there may be critiques about how easy it is to search, and maybe improvements can be made there as well, but could you address?
It actually goes two places. So when a case is filed, well, when a case is filed and then it's mapped, if you've used the mapping feature on the city's website, it takes about a week. So because they have to link up and we have to update that. The other thing is we have a permitting and case-of-middle software called eTrackIt. And if the public wants to log into and use eTrackIt, you can generally search by address and find cases and so forth, cases, permits, anything you want. You can create a user account, kind of a public user account, and you have a little more features, but the eTrackIt system is searchable as well.
Yeah, and I think that the other concern that folks have raised is there have been, I mean, I think the argument would be that there has been a lot of improvements in a proposed development by the time it gets to the application, the formal application. There is concern, I think, by the public that at that point, it's, the developer, property owner, has worked so long with the city that they kind of feel like, you know, this is as far as I'm going to go. Whether that's true or not, there's certainly that feeling out there. And I think we can take away that feeling by saying that long before you think it's cooked, there is an opportunity to know that something is being discussed for that development. Commissioner Buckley?
Chairman, it seems we're talking about item B, and you did say we want to start with item A, but I do have questions now that were in the weeds on this topic. Is it okay if I proceed?
Yes, though, at the moment, I should have said, I skipped something, didn't I? Mr. Medina, you should have alerted me to my mistake. So we called item four, and the first question was public comments, I'm sorry, item three, public comments. We did not have any comments on Lakewood Speaks, and at that moment, we didn't have anyone here other than staff. We have been joined. I would just ask if there's anyone from the public that wanted to make a comment, we would be happy to hear it, but you're not obligated to. So Commissioner Buckley, if we can, we'll put that on hold and we'll do the public comment before we return to the discussion. Thank you. If you could just remind us of your name and where your ward or address, that would be great.
Thank you. I appreciate being able to address you again. I'm Celia Greenman. I'm in Ward Two. I spoke last week with certain concerns, and as I was looking through the resolution again, and I was noticing who would be notified. Again, it stated that there would be notification to people within three, or neighbors within 300 feet of the project or neighborhood organizations within a quarter mile. That may suffice for a majority of the major site plans. However, in the instance where a major site plan is adjacent to a large park, there are certain parks in Lakewood. Lakewood has a lot of parks, and certain of the large parks, such as Belmar and Bear Creek Lake Park and Green Mountain, they are parks that draw people from the whole metro area and beyond, in the foothills. And there are other parks with certain amenities, such as Kendrick Lake Park with their gardens and the lake, and other parks with reservoirs, such as Main and East Reservoir, that also have their enthusiasts for different reasons. For instances like that, I would like to see a notification that would go out citywide, or perhaps, or in addition to placing a notice right at the park entrance so that people who go there on a regular basis are informed of what projects may be coming down the road. And that's something that I think is, I know that you address the impacts to parks in, further down in the resolution in option two, C, and D, but I think that it wouldn't hurt to add this extra layer of notification to people who would be most affected by the use of their favorite parks. Thank you.
And you may get some questions. I'll first, Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you, Chair. I think one thing that we were trying for here was striking a balance among several concerns. The 300-foot radius and quarter-mile radius are already established as a procedure in the zoning code, and so it was felt like not something, like specifically for special use permits, right? So from an implementation standpoint, like staff already knows how to do it, the developer community already knows how to do it because it's a, it's a thing that's routinely done. Not that that's the reason why we couldn't do something different, but it did make, like, just ease of implementation easier to explain the rationale of how those numbers came to be. But one thing that does strike me is that, you know, say you increase to a 600-foot radius or a half-mile radius, right? The number, you know, the cost and the amount of mailings that go out doesn't increase linearly as you double the distance. It's like, it's exponential, right? Because the circle just keeps getting bigger and bigger area. You know, so like you said, for instance, a citywide. My hesitation of doing something like that is just cost on the applicant, right? How much does it cost to print a postcard? How much does it cost to send a postcard? There's 70, 80,000 addresses in Lakewood. That could be a substantial sum of money, I think.
Could you perhaps notify by placing in some, a newspaper or something goes out from Lakewood?
Sure.
On the city website? I don't know who was talking about eTrackIt, but that is not an easy path to go to find what you want. I, there are, I wonder about the city website sometimes. When I go to check, I was looking, I put in a search for major site plans, and then it gave me all these other, you know, extraneous things that I didn't even ask for. So I, but I would think that there would be some way besides individual postcards where the city could be notified, or, and, or just signage at the park, you know, because that, that wouldn't be costly.
Sure. Yeah, I think, I'm trying to scan over the language in this EDM proposal. I had thought, it was my intent, that there was something in here. Yeah, notification on a website. I'll look for that and make sure. Because I do agree, like, an online notification is easy and, you know, much less burdensome to do than, you know, physical postcards on an ever-expanding radius of the whole city. And I do agree with you that maybe in some cases, that's appropriate. So I'll ponder that a bit and circle back to this evening. So thank you.
I would also say, I appreciate that notion. I have a similar reaction that Commissioner Buckley did, that the cost for every project to do that sort of notification would be overly burdensome. But a lot of times in zoning cases, there is a requirement to post a sign on the property. Could there be a circumstance where something within a certain distance of a park gets a sign posted at the entrances to parks? That seems to me to be relatively low cost and would alert folks that are using the park. You made a good point about it not just being the neighbors, but people come from distances to use those parks, and they may see that as an effect. I appreciate that. I'd like to think about it a little bit, and it might be that our recommendations could potentially include something like that, but we may not be able to say it super specifically in this resolution. But I think it's a, it's a good point, and I appreciate it.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions for the public speaker.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neill?
So, just in, some of the items that were mentioned, placing signage at the park is a great idea and is done often. But it just, I started thinking about social media, like, why we aren't maybe including that? That's free, and everyone, pretty much everyone has it. And using next door for good instead of evil might be an idea, where it's actually a city post of, these are the listings of developments that are in pre-planning, might become a resource, factual resource, rather than conjecture by neighborhoods. And then Facebook and Instagram and LinkedIn and whatever. I mean, I think you could kind of go, but next door seems to be a particular source. That's all.
Thanks. Other thoughts on that particular point, then I want to get back to Commissioner Buckley? I guess I would just, maybe just add to that discussion that maybe we might, and you know, I hate to do things on the fly, but if it was a generic enough recommendation about encouraging additional forms recommending that any major site plan has, in addition to other notification that would be required by law, would be that the city council should consider amending the zoning ordinance to require physical posting of signage and utilization of social media to increase notification. Something to think about. Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. The current language says that the notification procedures shall follow 17.2.2.2A of the zoning ordinance for neighborhood meetings required for special use permits, and then just I parenthetically put in there, spelling out, i.e., that's written notice within 300 feet and neighborhood organizations within a quarter mile, specifically spelling that out because I figured that very few people would go back and look what 17.2.2.2A says. But it is worth noting that 17.2.2.2A also does require physical posting on properties. So that is already included if, you know, we follow strictly the existing language, even if not explicitly spelled out.
And if we are following that section, it includes publication in the paper of record as well.
Okay.
And then, if I may, social media, so it doesn't go on next door and so forth, it goes in, now I'm drawing a blank.
Lakewood Together or?
Lakewood Together, Lakewood. There's an email that goes out every Friday. Lakewood Together, Lakewood. There's an email that goes out every Friday and I want to say Lakewood Speaks. I don't know what I'm thinking of, but it goes from the Public Information Office and it lists any meeting that the planning group has, neighborhood meeting and so forth. So that goes out to whoever's subscribing to that. So there is a social media component. We, as the planning staff, we have a projects page and if we get one of these, we could easily post it on that projects page. But then so it would be an initiative by someone else to actually go in and click it and open it.
I mean, I assume there would be posting on the property that is the subject of the application. I think the suggestion was, in a park-adjacent situation, if it might make sense to also post it in the park, which is off-site. And considering that that would be public land, I don't have as much concern about that. We could certainly require that. I would like to have that percolate a little bit more. What about A, is there a level of comfort that options 1 and 2 give the city council enough meat, which I think there is, to understand what we are suggesting? We are suggesting that developers should be required to get points for community engagement. So that's a requirement, that's not an option. But how they get those points would be generally, these two options are the ones that we've done the due diligence on, and by we, I mean others. And I'm pretty comfortable with this draft, but I'm curious if anyone has thoughts about changing subsection A or highlighting anything further in here? Or are we comfortable for the time being to leave it as is in this draft? Commissioner Buckley.
All right. I'm going to attempt a motion on the fly here of some additional language. So under option 1 for informational meeting, the second bullet point that currently says notification procedures shall follow section 17.2.2.2.2A of the zoning ordinance for neighborhood meetings required for special use permits, insert after the word special use permits, and shall also include a notice on the city's website and official city social media posts.
And so also include notice on the city's website and, what was the last part?
And official city social media posts.
Official social media posts. Is there, I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Discussion. Commissioner Overall.
I know, I realize these are just recommendations, but I want to caution, again, nine-tenths. We might be, we might drown out Lakewood's social media by having, increasing by 90% the, you know, the postings. That we might have a negative effect essentially on, on what the city's trying to do, which is notify the public of important things.
And I apologize for interrupting, but, and maybe I have this wrong. The way I was reading this is that in subsection A, we are only talking about formal applications. So unlike the provision that talks about pre-planning, these, the enhanced development menu, options, and requirement for engagement, and maybe that's not explicitly stated, but I understood it to be that it is after the application. And I see Commissioner Buckley shaking his head, but, and did you want to say something on that or?
Yes, thank you. Yes, so to clarify, here in section A, we're just talking about the new enhanced development menu item for community engagement. And so this only becomes relevant, not when it's a pre-planning application, but when it's an actual planning application and the applicant is deciding which items from the enhanced development menu, there's currently 28, this would add a 29, to use to satisfy their EDM point requirements necessary to have a site plan approved. Now, the way this is written currently, this is an optional item on the EDM, just like most of the items there are right now. And so for most projects, a developer can choose this if they think it's a good enough incentive and helps them, you know, meet their project goals in the way they want to do it, or they can leave it. With the one exception that, we included a proviso right before option 1 says, at least one point from this item 29 is required of the development site is within 300 feet of an existing park or open space land. So in the relatively small subset of pre-planning applications, one-tenth of them that make it to a planning application, and then in the small subset of those, one-tenth of planning applications that are within 300 feet of a park, then it is required to do this thing. So we're talking about a, I think, a much smaller number of cases and I'm, I'm not concerned about like the social media drowned out because of how narrow that is. Your point is well taken for when we get to the conversation about subsection B though. So thank you, Commissioner Overall.
Commissioner Overall.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
And this is going to seem really nitpicky, but I actually think of subsection A as being pre-planning 2, because it becomes mandatory on a developer at the point that they file the application. So it really, it's an obligation that manifests on the day it's filed. But I don't think of that as post. I mean, we're describing what you'd have to do post, but it is intended to be a discussion in the pre-planning process about how the developer needs to know that this is how they're going to have to go after points to secure this. But, so we have a motion and a second, 2, in this resolution on the second page where it says, notification procedures shall allow blah blah required for special use permits, insert, and also include a notice on the city website and official social media posts. Any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote on that. Start voting. Five to zero. That motion passes. That will be incorporated into the resolution. Any other thoughts in subsection A? Let's address subsection B. Now subsection B is the one where we are to Commissioner Overall's point, which is a very, very valid one. You know, and I think that's why I feel it's important for us to say, we know this is a cost. We know this is a burden, but it's a burden worth taking on because we want people to always feel that as soon as the city knows, they can know. And they may say, well, but it, you know, it'd be better if you sent me a letter, you know, at my house every time. But that's not reasonable. I think it is reasonable to have it be available in electronic format. Commissioner Buckley.
All right. Thank you. I have some questions for Mr. Rice. Basically, the heart of this subsection B is the, is the bullet points, little Roman numerals 1, 2, and 3. Include information on every potential development by address from the date of the pre-planning meeting. Allow any individual or group to opt in to receive an email notification when there's a pre-planning application and improve the current GIS system to identify these pre-planning things. Mr. Rice, I'm going to ask you to hazard a guess as to if this resolution in its current form was adopted by Planning Commission and then adopted by City Council, the most streamlined and feasible way to implement this. Is this most likely just looking like adding case numbers for pre-planning applications in eTrackit and uploading the pre-planning documents to eTrackit that don't get up there, loaded now there? And for that GIS map that already exists that shows all the active planning cases, add pre-planning cases as well? Or does it look like something different in your view?
Pardon? Turn the mic on.
Yeah, basically I'm asking, how is this implemented? Like, if we pass this and it becomes real, what are you doing to make it happen?
There, ignoring the meeting part, there's only one change that will happen. So, and that will be that pre-plannings go to the development cases highlight map. If you go into eTrackit, you can search for pre-plans, right? They have a case number. All our cases have some type of prefix. I'll use an easy one. We have an AX. It stands for annexation. So that's the alpha part. The next two numbers that you'll see is the year. So AX24 means there is an annexation that was filed in calendar year 24. And then it's 000, 0001. It's the first one of the calendar year. Now, if that annexation is applied for in November, the annexation may not occur until January of 2025. So the alpha, the case number doesn't necessarily show up. But if you go into eTrackit, you can search for pre-plannings at this point in time. You just have to go in and look. It's a ZP is the prefix. And then if you're looking for 24, you can type in ZP24. I believe there's a method to use like an asterisk. And so you can search either a specific address, right? And it'll show you if a pre-planning's been filed, or you can search for the calendar year. So that you can currently do. What we'll have to do is we'll have to take those pre-plans as they come in and publish to the development highlight map.
Okay.
That's a significant change from a process standpoint.
Yeah, I, you know, I will admit, two and a half years on the Planning Commission had not previously alerted me to the fact that pre-planning applications were already available on eTrackit. I think the website's probably not generally that accessible or well-known by the public. But that is, is good to know that it's, it's already there. Bullet point 2 does say, any individual or group can opt in to receiving an email notification. Is there any system like that or would that be a new thing you'd have to devise?
Opt in for email notification.
Of whenever a project enters the pre-planning process. And I guess this is worded pretty broadly, whenever a project, so probably, you know, every week, there's a blast going out with a bunch of projects that came in the door that week.
Right. And I believe the commission is, so I said there's one change, there'll be a second change as well. I believe the commission receives every week a case listing. Is that correct? Are you getting an automatic case listing? All right. So let me backtrack my, you're kind of putting me on the spot and have to think it all through. So not only will we, so that case listing is also connected to the development case map. So when we, when we push the pre-plans out to the development case map, it'll also go into that case listing that the commissioners are receiving. And any individual or group that has subscribed to that case listing, they'll receive that as well. I can't remember how that works exactly, but I know there are individuals beside the commissioners that that receive that, so.
How does one currently become an individual that receives that without being appointed to the Planning Commission? Again, I didn't know such a thing existed until I was on this potty.
Right. I believe the Public Information Officer, Stacy Olton, keeps that list. I'd need to go back and check, but I know there's a list that that case map goes out to. It's individuals that have requested it. So we send it to commissioners and council, certain staff people, and then individuals that have asked for that particular list.
Okay. So I think the substantive effect of this bullet point 2, that says, allow any individual or group to opt in to receive an email notification wherever, whenever a project enters the pre-planning process, are you envisioning what that actually looks like? Is just make it easier and more public to sign up for this very not-well-known existing email distribution that happens every Friday?
Yes, there, have to work through that. It may be something that it's on the planning page that they can enter information to receive case listings. Yes, something would have to change to the website or the current way we're doing so that individuals can enter that information a little quicker.
Yeah.
I don't want an email coming directly to me and then passing it along to, to, that's not a real efficient use of either the individual opting in or my time. So I'd probably take it a step further and we'll do something on the website where they can enter their information and then it populates that case list.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful to know. And it does altogether, to me, seem to reduce the burden that's kind of inherent in B, just kind of thinking through what these implementations look like. A lot of what Commissioner Overall was saying about, you know, every pre-planning application and thinking what that looks like, I just imagined it being very overwhelming and the amount of information to put out publicly and the overwhelming use of staff time. But it does seem, based on what Mr. Rice is saying, that, you know, maybe this is not such a big of a lift to do as I thought. So I guess I'll just ponder that a bit more. And curious about other's thoughts on the commission. Commissioner Overall.
Yeah, what Mr. Rice just described very much allays my fears, previous fears, especially, you know, we're doing a cost-benefit analysis of additional transparency to the public and hopefully, you know, restored trust by the public in the process and that it's not kind of rigged. And the cost of implementing this, and that just made this calculus, the cost of implementing it, go way down. So I withdraw my previous apprehensions about, about this. And I think I'm comfortable moving forward.
Commissioner Furman.
At what point do they end up on the map, on the GIS map? At one point in the process?
Good question. So the map is, is updated on, on Friday, right? So in theory, if it is submitted Monday through Thursday and the system updates and populates itself, that case map is updated weekly, is what I would say. Now, there are multiple things that occur with that. There's the link to Jeffco, there's eTrackit syncing with the GIS system and so forth. So it could be a week, but it's, it's not going to be beyond a week.
But, but I mean, is even the pre-planning, the, the ZP items, do those go on the map?
They don't. We currently don't place those on the map.
And this is going to be a total guess on your part, I'm sure, unless you happen to know this offhand. How many pre-planning applications do you, do you think you get in a given month or year?
Right. So there are high times and low times. As of, let's see, I was working on some items for the budget. I think for 2024, we've already had 98 pre-plannings submitted. We, a low year is about 80 and a high year is about 150. So anywhere from 80 to 150 in a calendar year, depending on the development cycle. And as of, let's see, we're in September, probably the end of July, first part of August, we had 98 for 2024.
Okay. Well, and the reason I was asking that is because I think we've established that it's not that high of a bar to get the notification. And if it's, if we're looking at 100, the other secondary concern I had was if you had like 500 in a year, the map would become a sea of dots. But if you're only getting...
So, let's see. The way this, the way the map works is when the, the case is submitted, it goes to the map for a certain period of time. When the case is closed, it goes off the map, right? So with formal submittals, generally those are up for nine to 12 months. With a pre-plan, it's probably going to be, well, we're, we're getting back to this range, but pre-plans historically have been processed in about four to six weeks. So that would be posted on the, on the website for about four to six weeks and then they go away. You can still find them in eTrackit, they're just not visibly displayed.
No, I mean, that already answers my, my bigger concern was, yeah, was trying to track down all the ways in which it could be overwhelming. track down all the ways in which it could be overwhelming. But, right, that answers it. Thanks a lot.
It seems we have strong support for this notion, and I don't want to dissuade anyone. But one of the things that, that I take away from this, and I think that we should communicate to City Council, is it is both in terms of adding information, which is important, but it's also making it friendlier and easier. And this is no disrespect to Mr. Rice or anyone in the Planning Department, but you are actually not in the Communications Department. And I wonder if really these questions are the, are, are better framed by the folks in IT and Communications to say, all right, what data do you want to make available? Here's our suggestion. There should be three maps. There should be a pre-planning map, there should be a planning, you know, an application map, there should be a, you know, highlights of projects from last year. It's, that's really not a, I mean, I appreciate the questions to Mr. Rice in the sense that, yeah, we could tweak this or tweak that or whatnot, but really, I don't want planning to have anything to do with that. I think part of this message is there ought to be somebody at the city that is helping planning get information out in a way that people feel it's accessible, it's easy to understand. It doesn't really matter if we can understand it or staff can understand it, it's more important if people can understand it. So I would say, you know, we, the ultimate decision may be throw out all of your maps and whatever else. Here's a better way to represent it graphically. But I think it's premature for us to say, this is the way it's going to be implemented. I think our message is you got to add information, you got to give people a chance to go get that information if they want to opt into it, and you got to make it more user-friendly. Does that make sense? Any other thoughts on B? Well, let's move to C, and C's a fun one. Because I did a lot of thinking about our last discussion, and we had some very useful comments from staff on this as well, including legal staff. And I understand the desire to be specific enough. We don't want this to be something that is a project killer. But as I was rethinking about this, I was doing some poking around. This is not actually a new concept. In fact, one of the jurisdictions that we so often seem to refer to, Fort Collins is a great example. They have a development ordinance that specifically provides for the analysis of effects on habitat. So what they have put in their final ordinance is beefy. It is substantial. It's 13 pages. But conceptually, it is exactly what we were talking about, which is that a development must analyze based upon identification of areas of natural habitat, what the effects will be from that development, and must mitigate them. Whereas after our last conversation, I was thinking, yeah, yeah, maybe this is going to be a hard wheel to reinvent. I actually don't think it's going to be. I think there's going to be models out there. And the concept that I would like to convey to City Council is, we don't currently have anything in our zoning ordinance, any of our development requirements that say the development adjacent to a park needs to be able to demonstrate whether there are adverse, adverse effects on the habitat of the park and provide for mitigation of those adverse effects. And I don't think that's going to be actually that hard for staff to ultimately do. Let me just share with you kind of the, the piece of Fort Collins that is exactly like what I was kind of thinking about. It, it is a general standard to the maximum extent feasible. A development plan shall be designed and arranged to be compatible with and to protect natural habitats and features and the plants and animals that inhabit them and integrate them within the developed landscape of the community. And then it gives some ways to do that. This may be the best draft of this concept ever, it may be the worst. But what I was trying to do was suggest that there ought to be some criteria in our code. If City Council agrees with that, well, then it's incumbent upon staff to respond to City Council and say, here's an ordinance. And they may say, we think the way that other cities have done this is terrible. It's not working. It's killing projects. Or they may say, this one strikes the right balance. But as we were talking last time about Phase One, Phase Two, environmental impact studies and whatnot, I'm very uncomfortable making that recommendation at this point. City of Fort Collins, and again, it's just one example, but it's one from just a few miles away. They talk about having an ecological characterization and natural habitat or future boundary definition. And they do an ecological characterization study, and they describe what that study is. So the question for the commission is, would we be comfortable making the general recommendation that there should be a criteria that looks at whether there's adverse impacts with the understanding that it'll be worked on by professional staff down the road? Or do you feel that it's necessary for us to really get into the, wait for it, weeds and, and come up with a very, very specific recommendation for them? Commissioner Furman.
First of all, I want to say, you make me feel lazy. If you believe the 13-page one, it's, it's easy.
It's only 13.
I can appreciate that it's easy, I suppose, to mimic somebody else's 13 pages, but it does seem like that is, that, it tells me that it is challenging, right? To, to do so. And you may not know this offhand, but I just thought I would ask you a couple of questions. Is the Fort Collins one universal for development? Is it in relationship to their parks? What is it? I'm sorry to ask you questions on this one, but...
It actually is broader than just parks. What they do is they map natural habitats. And based on the map, if any development that was within a certain distance has to do certain things. And in fact, they even have a table where based upon what you might be affecting, it's different. So migratory waterfowl concentration areas, that's going to be applied to every development within 300 feet. Whereas bald eagle communal feeding sites, 660 feet. So it's a level of detail that I think far from this being too hard to figure out, people have figured it out. Whether they've figured it out well or poorly, I don't feel qualified.
Well, and I'll say, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to...
Sure, no. Please.
I will say, I feel like I just keep disagreeing with you. I don't see that as being more broad. In some ways, I think I appreciate the idea that they have mapped it and it is relative to specific areas, only because the thing that worries me about it is that level of detail thrown out universally across parks in Lakewood where we have a significant acreage of parks and significant number of places related to parks, it would be somewhat of a scary overlay. So it's, it's nice to think that it would have some thoughtful boundaries that limit its impact. Okay, I have to think about that a little bit, but thanks.
And just, just to wrap that up, I am not suggesting that our recommendations say, copy Fort Collins. My point is, I would be comfortable saying, our recommendation is that this is something missing from our code. We ought to have a provision. And if the City Council agrees, then they should, you know, ask for an ordinance to be prepared on that issue. Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate your research onto this and, and finding the Fort Collins ordinance. And appreciate too that you're not saying we have to copy paste Fort Collins or even base it loosely off of them. But I, I think I would feel a lot better about this if I knew how Fort Collins or any other city that's mimicked them or that they've mimicked what their experience with this and, and what the broader effects are of how effective it is at actually achieving its ecological goals as well as, yes, what the impacts on development are. I did do some searching for other cities that have tried to sensibly go down this route. And one thing I kept on finding in my online searches were various academic articles citing the threat to wildlife habitat chiefly from urban sprawl, from the phenomenon of the, the boundaries of urban development expanding outward and outward from the center. And that's a problem in some places, but really, if you look at Lakewood now, we're pretty much an infill development community. It's not the 1960s and 70s and 80s here anymore, where a lot of what exists in our city now is being developed or even earlier than that. You know, we've, in the last decade or so, we've had one kind of area down in Rooney Valley where there's been new large subdivisions. Most everything else in recent times has been infill development. And I think going forward, it's even more slanted in the direction of infill development. Well, anyways, just encouraging and allowing infill development in and of itself takes economic and development pressure off of expanding into the next greenfield out on the edge, you know? For, for every new infill project that's easier to build in Lakewood, there's a little bit less monetary incentive and economic need for someone to go build something out on the edge of Brighton or, you know, down in Douglas County or out in Eastern Aurora. And I was coming to the conclusion myself that maybe the most sensible way to protect habitat in the broadest picture, and I think we care about habitat everywhere, I care about habitat all across Colorado, is to say, well, Lakewood's pretty much already developed as a city. Like encourage more of that and, and less of the outward sprawl in the other places. So for those reasons, I was coming to this meeting with very much the opposite idea of what you suggested, and that idea was to strike this. So I'll see how that goes. I move to strike Section C in its entirety.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second?
All right, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
So I think that, I mean, I continue to have the same sort of challenge, which is I, I appreciate that Fort Collins has done this, but I wonder what the impact is, although, and it is significant in its scope, 13 pages and very detailed. And I understand yours not saying to copy Fort Collins specifically, but yeah, like I said, my, my challenge still hinges on, on creating something that is hard to measure. It does seem like this is possible. I, I don't know, I'm of two minds on this one now. It does seem like other people have done it, but we don't know what the actual outcome of it is. I continue to think on this one.
Commissioner Overall.
I tend to agree. I would like to see data on how effective these types of ordinances are in protecting The fact that there are 13 pages makes me feel like it's probably opening a can of worms to, to hand this very broad language over. I, I really appreciate the spirit of it. Don't get me wrong, I, I do think that we need some guidance here on how development impact, how the, on developers' responsibility to assess their impact on, on ecology. But, yeah, I don't think this, I don't think this is thought through enough. If, if we had more, I think, data and time, I would become more comfortable with it.
May, may I ask a question, or is this inappropriate at the time of the motion?
Yeah, I think with, let's go ahead and have Commissioner O'Neill. Did you have a question, or you were going to speak to this? Just your light was on before Paul.
Well, I was just going to, I actually just going to ask if it was, if we could, because we're not writing an ordinance, if we could recommend something like City Council should take a look at cities like Fort Collins and others that have these things in place, and it's really for them to look into and study. Because it does exist, and it's a matter of if it's successful or not, and it's not something I think that this body can determine. That's all I was going to say, so Paul can go.
Thanks. Mr. Rice.
So my, I did a little looking at Fort Collins, and it was kind of similar to what I had discussed a little bit last week. My question is that the hab, so the habitat, is it on the site being developed, or is it the habitat in the park? Because they're, they're two very different things. And going back to Commissioner Buckley's comment, a lot of Lakewood is built out and there's not a lot of natural habitat left. It's, it's in the Rooney Valley. So Fort Collins, there's, there's bird migratory ways and all kinds of things up there. So I, I'm, I'm asking the question because you, ignoring the one site that everybody's talking about, you could have a, a piece of property next to a park and there's a tree or two. And then is that part of the habitat of the park because a couple of birds or squirrels or something nest there? So I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the nexus is. Is it the, are we, are we analyzing one piece of property that could be anywhere from a half acre to a couple? Or is it, are we analyzing the habitat and the interaction of the flora and fauna with the adjacent site, is my question.
Yeah, and, and it's always a risk talking about a particular ordinance. It was, now I think I've got everybody fixated on Fort Collins. I should have just said, any town USA. The point, the only point I think was that there are ways to craft codes to deal with habitat. And Mr. Rice, to your question, they specifically deal with off-site effects. So it would be that if you put up a giant building right in a waterfowl migration area, that that would be something that would have to be considered. But I also hear the concerns being raised about even taking that approach, maybe opening a, a can of worms. Did you have your light on again, or? Commissioner Buckley.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say again that, yeah, I don't feel comfortable talking about Fort Collins and its specifics because I haven't looked at the ordinance or, or any other town, because we don't know those specifics. And I, I think just broadly, it's premature to, it's premature for me to have confidence that we're suggesting something that gets at what council asks us to do. And, you know, we could take two approaches here. We could possibly think about this and wrestle with it for months. I think it would be months till I personally got to a point where possibly, I don't know if it would be or not, but, you know, maybe I could possibly, with months of grappling with this, get to a point where something that makes sense for the specific context of Lakewood and answer some of the questions Paul was just talking, or Mr. Rice was just talking about, you know, about how broadly we apply it and, and how we map things and, and what to include and what special circumstances we have. But, you know, without knowing that, I, I recognize that maybe that's, you know, where the Planning Commission stopped their work and City Council stopped their work and we get experts to go. But I feel like that once we kind of go down that rabbit hole of ecological expertise, we don't know how restrictive it ends up being. And I'm not really sure if I like it or not. Just going back to my concerns about Lakewood not being a place that's sprawling out anymore and being an infill community, and, well, places like Fort Collins, for instance, can still, they still have a lot of planes to sprawl out to on the north and south and east. So to me, it just remains simpler to strike it. I guess we can take a vote and see how others feel.
Mr. Rice.
And my question was for the commission. And I was asking for clarification on what the commission was actually thinking. Because staff can put something together specific to Lakewood, I didn't know or quite understand if the commission was looking at specifics. Site adjacent, larger, what you're, and Commissioner Kolkmaier explained that a little bit.
Yeah, and, and the way C is drafted at this point is that it would be park adjacent development, effects on habitats within the park. So Commissioner Furman.
I didn't want to distract from that back and forth, but what I guess I was going to get at is, is the similar kind of thing, which is, I was thinking about this... get at is, is the similar kind of thing, which is, I was thinking about this as Commissioner Buckley was talking. As detailed as, and I understand you were just using Fort Collins as an example, but unfortunately, it's a good example, right, of one that has bothered to be robust in what it's trying to achieve. But what I do think it potentially does is distract from the original concern, which is, okay, so if we are, we're concerned about the property adjacent, we're not as concerned about the infill property, because I think we justifiably understand that the, there's not a lot of greenfields that are being developed. So, it's gonna be a lot of replacement, what have you. So, you're concerned about the adjacent property. We see here a ordinance that is addressing, you know, various distances and their impacts on various wildlife, fauna, what have you. The challenge I have is, I'm still not sure that it is going to be a metric that somebody ahead of time will have any sensibility about. And that is where my concern comes back to. I started to get a little distracted in this earlier conversation. What I've come back to is the same original point, which is, I, not using the site that everyone's thinking about, I'll imagine a site, imagine, not that there is, but imagine a site next to one of the ravines that's coming off of Green Mountain, right? So, one of those sort of tributary ravines, since it's a place that we can imagine, somebody's doing a, whatever, they're building a due place, because this thing is broad, right? The question is, how, we start looking at how that house, or whatever, may impact the ravines. And it becomes a question of how much impact is detrimental, what, I don't know, I'm, I'm concerned about the bounds of what this does, without knowing more about it. Because I think that can be well-intended, and can easily get to be perhaps unintentionally restrictive in all kinds of areas, depending on where it goes. And that, that is the hesitation I have. Well, I think it is clearly robust, that one, I understand. Others might not be, but, that's the concern.
Well, I hear those concerns. And we have a motion to strike C. If there is no further discussion, we'll have everyone log their votes. Ouch. Four, yes, and one no, being myself. C is stricken. As an epilogue on that, you know, I, I do think, again, it goes to the, one of the things we want to think about, and maybe this is gonna be the same issue on D, is where are we in the process? And it, it is, I think, we're in a stage of making general recommendations that professional staff and consultants would be able to weigh in on. And I have a little higher confidence, I think, that that balance could maybe be struck. But, Commissioner Furman?
Oh, and not to get overly restrictive, but I guess it does also go to the question of the intent of what we're trying to do, which is the public engagement piece, right?
Park overlay. This one's park overlay.
Oh, that's right. Fair enough, fair enough.
All the remains in this resolution now is D. And I do recall from our last discussion, there was some concern, and we also got some advice from staff, that, that maybe this is also too broad. Thoughts by Commissioners on D? Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you. At the last meeting, I ventured forth the possibility of some more landscape requirements adjacent to park. I did look at that a little bit, and, yeah, to the point that Commissioner Kolkmaier's made a few ways tonight, this is a, you know, preliminary recommendation. It's not in the draft form of the ordinance. It already says here in D that the, we, we, the Planning Commission, encourage City Council to consider adopting other criteria that council deems appropriate to be applied to all park adjacent properties, before going into a however about avoiding overlay districts. So, I didn't myself want to go into a great deal of depth of what I was proposing. I'd be interested in hearing other Commissioners' thoughts about the landscaping idea I briefly broached last night, and maybe I would consider a motion to just add a few words to say, you know, such as landscaping, after it says other criteria. But I don't know, I'm interested in what other people would think of that.
Commissioner Furman?
No, while I support the idea of the landscaping idea, the thing I do like about this one, even though it's broad, and it's gonna sound contrary to what we were just talking about, that feels a little, I feel judgment wafting off. But, the point is, however, it is actually even more broad, because it isn't, it doesn't feel like we are defining the, the concern specifically. I, I don't know, I, I don't know whether or not you need to get that specific. It does open the opportunity to address your concerns, Chair Kolkmaier, I think. Because it really, they could go far afield and pull back in what we've just struck by leaving this broad. But at the same time, it deals with park-adjacent items like the landscaping, and, and as you were discussing, Commissioner Buckley, the last time, has dealt with buffer zones and that sort of thing. It feels like it is broad in a way that may serve a lot of purposes without directly talking about some of the things the prior stricken ones did. So, I mean, it's not that I wouldn't support it, it's more that I don't know whether or not you need, there's some value to the broad, broadness of it, so.
Well, let me ask this question of Commissioners. There's two things in D here, and one is less relevant. The first section probably should be stricken no matter what, because we've taken out the only criteria we would have specifically mentioned. What about still leaving in the rest of it, though, which was a conclusion that we have, that because Lakewood parks are not evenly distributed, we are not recommending the creation of overlay districts, because every park ought to be treated individually, and we are concerned that that might discourage additional parks in underserved areas of the city. So, those two things were meant to strike a balance. The first part of it, I think, is gone. So, do we still want to leave in a recommendation not to do overlay districts because of the unique and varied nature of our parks? Commissioner O'Connell, and you had your light on before, so you don't feel like you have to answer that, but you can.
Oh, well, I do have a question about that. So, why is the first part gone?
The, so that, I think the first part's gone, it's kind of implicitly gone, because C says, if you're adjacent to a park, here's an additional criteria. And then in D, we're saying, we're encouraged you to consider adopting other criteria to C, but C is out. So, it would at least have to be, what, a recommendation, a recommendation that they should adopt criteria? We are not giving them any criteria, but that they should?
I understand.
Yeah.
I suppose what I see that is, what I see this sentence, if you take out the word "other," what I see this sentence as reading is saying, we haven't thought of everything. You should feel free to, you know, add things to the ordinance that you think make sense, that we haven't, you know, we're not qualified to, or we haven't added here. In other words, we could just say this is not a comprehensive list. But I don't know if others read the sentence similarly, if you took the word "other" out.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Would it be appropriate to, if we were to leave the first part in, and in saying adopting other criteria, suggest things like ecological studies, so that it's not so many words and so much criteria added, but things like "that" should be looked at by City Council? Because then it kind of puts the ball in their court to look at that type of criteria without us, because we're not drafting this, without us telling them all the different types of criteria. Maybe there's a couple of examples beyond ecology, but I, I mean, I'm kind of mourning C, even though I voted against it. C being gone because of this piece, I think it's unfortunate to not address it at all. But I think maybe C was a bit too heavy-handed, possibly. Just curious of others' thoughts on that.
Yeah, I guess my quick reaction is, you know, I think our greatest value in making recommendations is when we suggest doing something, or not doing something. I'm not sure it's a very powerful recommendation for us to say, and you should consider other things that might be improvements to the ordinance. And I don't, I'm not, you know, being flip on that. I just think, I think it's a more effective, coherent recommendation. If we are making a recommendation, there should be criteria, then what do we think those criteria, criteria ought to be? And if we don't have confidence, and I think it's clear we don't have confidence that we know what those criteria are, I would be less comfortable recommending that some criteria ought to be implemented by City Council, because we haven't even given them one. Commissioner Furman?
I swear I didn't come to argue with you.
No, no.
But I will say, I don't disagree, Commissioner O'Neill, because of the phrasing of C, where it had the Planning Commission recommends that in reviewing major site plan applications, the ordinance require the evaluation of the potential effects on the park adjacent. Anyway, without reading the whole thing, it is very specific. And it is, it corners a recommendation that while we talk about the idea of, hey, this is still up for City Council and the planners to draft something and come up with something, I think that truth can still hold, even if we aren't as specific and restrictive. I guess I would say, I don't know that I totally agree, it feels like you're, yourself are going both ways on this, to say that we weren't giving them something specific, we were making recommendations generally, but we don't want to get too general. So, I think it's okay, knowing that we weren't gonna be drafting the final version of the ordinance, to give some criteria, even if they are more general and less restrictive than C was. But, again, I didn't come to argue.
No, no, I, I don't concern in argument. I've just, I, the question, I think it begs the question, which is, if we feel confident that there should be criteria, do we feel confident that there should be park-adjacent criteria? Is that our recommendation? There should be? And if we think that, do we have one example? Commissioner Buckley?
The one example I can think of that I know I would, like, unhesitatingly support is some sort of enhanced landscape buffer between higher density and higher intensity uses and a park. I, I don't know if I would support other ideas. It depends on what would be suggested. I appreciate Commissioner O'Neill's discussion of maybe a seeming difference between throwing maybe a word in here about ecology or habitat versus the, how specific we got in C that we just struck. But to me, I think it leads back down the same place. So, if we stuck that word back in, I don't think I would support that. But yeah, I, I do struggle to see, think what else besides landscaping I, I know I would support. I'll throw out some examples of things I wouldn't support that I've thought of, that other people have brought up, like bulk plane restrictions, you know? Bulk plane restrictions, as currently written in our code, are mitigating a specific harm of lack of access to sunlight to, you know, specific residences and residential properties next to like mixed-use or high-density residential zones, where, you know, you could have a building that's in perpetual shadow or something. And that's like a harm to the person living in a specific house. And, I don't know, a shadow on a park is, to me, not the same kind of harm, and it's not the same kind of infringement on a neighbor's property rights. And, more broadly, I just fundamentally think there's a lot of great parks that, that already exist in Lakewood that a lot of people live next to. And, you know, bulk planes, at the end of the day, reduce, reduce density. And I'm, I'm not certain that every park should have a reduction in density next to it. So, like, that's an example of something that has come to us in public comment, that I'll just flatly have to disagree with those who have commented on it. So, yeah, so to me, it comes back to landscaping is the only other criteria to quote our current language that I, I know I would unhesitatingly support. I'll keep listening to see if there's other ideas people have.
Commissioner O'Connell?
Thank you, Chair. I, I now appreciate what you're saying, which is, we haven't presented criteria, so it's not particularly helpful to say, and any criteria you have is, is fine with us. So, I would support striking that first sentence. And I do very much appreciate the second part of whatever section we're on D.
Commissioner Buckley?
I move in D to strike everything from the first word "the" through "however." So, the Planning Commission further encourages the City Council to consider adopting other criteria that council deems appropriate to be applied to all park-adjacent properties. However, all that gets struck, and everything after that, beginning with the Planning Commission does not recommend establishing universal park-adjacent overlay districts remains. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Commissioner O'Connell. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Then, please cast your votes. And that's five yes and no noes. That motion passes. So, where we are at this moment is, we have the resolution that was posted on Lakewood Speaks with only the following changes. In, under A, we've inserted after notification procedures, after special use permits, and also include a notice on the city website and official social media posts. C is stricken, and D is stricken from the Planning Commission through however. So, what remains is, the Planning Commission does not recommend establishing universal park-adjacent overlay districts because, down to the end. That is the current state of the resolution. Any other suggested thoughts, additions? I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended this evening. Commissioner O'Connell?
I move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Furman seconds. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. And that resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Commissioners. A lot of work on this, a lot of time. I may insert something in the comprehensive plan on habitat. And I think that concludes our item number three. And I'll get with Mr. Medina and Mr. Rice to prepare that ordinance to send back to them. Just as a reminder to the commission, it is taking some time for these recommendations to be scheduled for City Council, but when it is presented to City Council, probably in a study session, it'll be probably a couple of months. And then depending on what they choose to do with it, there may be directions to staff to prepare an ordinance, or perhaps not. We never know. We are moving on to item four, approval of the minutes, and we have a lot of minutes to approve. My question, I actually am gonna make two suggested changes to all of these minutes. So, before I do that, does anyone have anything individually? So before I do that, does anyone have anything individually on any of these that they feel we need to correct, change, amend? Mr. Medina, you did a very good job on the minutes. I will, however, suggest one, just small technical change. All of these minutes make reference to it being the city clerk that produces them, and it should be, I believe, the clerk of the Planning Commission. I suspect that was just a cut and paste from the City Council minutes. But if that, I would move that we amend the minutes for January 17th, January 31st, February 21st, March 6th, April 3rd, April 17th, and May 1st, to substitute clerk of the Planning Commission for city clerk in that introductory portion. Is there a second?
I love the fastidiousness, second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? No discussion, I'll simply take yays and nays. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. The second is a change that is, I think, appropriate because of what the City Council is changing, and because I think it more accurately reflects the minutes. These minutes, and Mr. Medina, I appreciate all the work you put into taking all of the Lakewood Speaks and incorporating them in the minutes, but I think we're getting away from that, because those are already archived and available by meeting dates. So I would move that we delete from our minutes all of the Lakewood Speaks comments and substitute it with a sentence that directs individuals to Lakewood Speaks by meeting date for any online public comments. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Buckley.
It may seem redundant to have the Lakewood Speaks comments in the minutes, but I think I'm actually going to vote no on this amendment. It shouldn't surprise anyone who's watched Planning Commission meetings to know that I'm kind of a nerd about a lot of planning issues. And there was something last year that piqued my curiosity, that I'd heard about from a Lakewood planning case that happened in 1974. And I filed an open records request for the minutes of that meeting, and the city clerk still had them, and it had every single public comment. And that was 50 years ago. And in 50 years from now, I very much doubt that Lakewood Speaks will still contain all those comments. It probably won't even contain them in, in five years, you know, when someone might even want to go back and look at them. It's simpler just to keep them in the minutes. It's a permanent record. We know the minutes are always going to be in the archive in, somewhere in City Hall, and they will live there forever, which is what I think the purpose of minutes is for. So it's a minor thing, but I'm a no on this.
I'm going to try to change your mind. Number one, it, for the very reason you just described, is why it cannot be in the minutes. Because when someone looks at it 50 years later, they think, oh, that was the important thing. But it's not something that took place during the meeting. And for that reason, it is actually, it fails to capture the accurately what has happened. So to the extent public comments are collected outside the meeting in Lakewood Speaks, whether they're kept for a day or 100 years, that is a separate archive that cannot be properly thought of as inside-the-meeting minutes. So I think that it really, it gives an improper or inaccurate, I would say not improper, inaccurate description of what that meeting was. I will add to it that, and I'm not, and I'm going to get, I don't think I have a third motion, but this relates to it, so I want you to give it some thought. By reproducing in such detail what individual public commenters say, but not producing in the minutes any summary of what Commissioners say, right? All we record in the minutes, motions and votes. So are those minutes accurately reflecting what that meeting was? If we were going to verbatim, or as close to verbatim summarize, discussion, it should be Commissioners and in-person public comment, but not comments outside the meeting, and maybe not even comments, public comments inside the meeting, though I can see why that would be logical, but they should be briefer. And maybe the major thing that's missing is a summary of the discussion of Commissioners on motions rather than just the motions themselves. Others' thoughts? Commissioner Overall.
I'm convinced.
Did I make the motion on, I think I did, that the reference would be in the minutes that all of those Lakewood Speaks comments can be found on Lakewood Speaks by the day of the meeting? And we did have a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of making that change to the minutes of January 17th, January 31st, January, February 21st, March 6th, April 3rd, April 17th, and May 1st. Say aye.
Aye.
Oh, would you, actually, actually, we probably should take a recorded vote, because this, so go ahead, I open the voting. Small victories. I appreciate it, Commissioner Buckley. So that passes unanimously. So going forward, hopefully, Mr. Medina, that's going to be an easier task for you. And then the other thing to give some consideration to, and I would encourage other Commissioners to comment on this as well, is whether or not some of the public comments that are in the meeting might be summarized more generally, and perhaps some of the comments of Commissioners in discussion might be useful to have in the minutes. I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in on that or not. Otherwise, we'll leave it to Mr. Medina. Commissioner Overall.
I would be in favor of that as well.
As would I.
Does that give you enough direction?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
And we very much appreciate it. We know that minutes are no small task, and we appreciate that you've cleared all those out. Having made those two changes, I make a motion that we approve those minutes as amended for January 17th, January 31st, February 21st, March 6th, April 3rd, April 17th, and May 1st. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Furman, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, oh, Commissioner Overall.
I am going to need to abstain from the first, until April 3rd, because I was not present.
And I believe we can adopt this on a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously. Terrific. That concludes the approval of those minutes. And item five is general business. I have no general business. Mr. Rice, do you have general business or scheduling for us?
No general business scheduling. We've got a little bit of a break. Still trying to confirm, I asked this morning, I'm trying to combine a, kind of an informational meeting for October 9th. Staff threw back at me that maybe we'll combine it for the second, and Jonathan won't be there. So I don't have that. So the next tentative date, we'll keep you posted, well ahead of time, will either be October 2nd or October 9th. And October 16th will be a staff-generated item, it's a rezoning for a project over on Alameda. And then it escapes me, I think we've got something tentative for early November and early December as well, but nothing confirmed at this time. So a little break for September, and then a busy October.
Commissioner Overall.
I just wanted to thank Jaime for the reminders of the meetings, those have been extremely helpful. And I also want to apologize, I was not able to log in to Lakewood Speaks because of me-not-do But that is now fixed. But that's, I did read the comments, but that is why I didn't have a button to click saying that I had read the comments. I just want to go on record for that, and also just to apologize for not being able to do that.
And now that you know how to do it, they're going to prompt you to change your password, and the whole thing starts over again. Commissioner Buckley.
I've just been asked at various forums, three times, I think, in the last couple of weeks, when the site plan case is coming to the Planning Commission for 777 South Yarrow, and my answer has been, I don't know. Does anyone know, Mr. Rice?
Not at this point in time. It will, where we're at in the process, it won't be October, so we're looking at November and December right now.
I presume the delay is still with the applicant?
Not necessarily. The city took a very, very long time to get applicant comments. I think they've had comments for about two weeks. So they need, depending on the extent of the comments and what they come back with, at least four, it could be six, could be eight weeks, to turn around and get us a middle back to the city. So I don't have specifics on all the comments, but they do need a month or two to respond to staffs.
Okay. So this has been pushed back a lot, but if we had to do the risky endeavor of hazarding a guess, what the soonest it could be, it's sounding like maybe December?
I'm going to keep my fingers crossed for November, but most likely it's December.
All right. We will see.
Any other thoughts or comments? We are adjourned at 8:37. Thank you all.
Thank you.